I would ask that we suspend the rules and add a resolution that the city manager or city attorney will pass out concerning calling on the city staff to not protest the election petition. And I would make that in the form of a motion.
Is there a second? Councilman Schwartz seconds. The rules of the council do not allow any item to be placed on the agenda for action that same night unless the rules are suspended, and that is requires a vote of two-thirds of the council, of the council body.
If I may, Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Man speaker, you gave us some explanation, so essentially you would put forth a resolution stopping the city from moving forward with a declaratory action judgment or any litigation in regards to the petition by Mr. Ewing? Is that...
It's the way I understand what you helped me write. Yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
And are you asking for, do you want action on that item tonight?
Yes, I do want action on that item tonight.
Okay, so as the mayor stated, in order for there to be action on an item the night of the council meeting, there would need to be a two-thirds vote to suspend the rules pursuant to council rule 10.1.
And actually, that rule states that we must always announce the agenda five days in advance, so that's what we are superseding by this vote. We're suspending that rule so that action could be taken this evening. Is there additional discussion? All those, I'm sorry, Mrs. Hiller?
I am eager for us to discuss this issue publicly at the council level and with people in the community, but I have steadfastly, when we passed the rules, been uncomfortable with adding an action item that neither the public nor the council had seen beforehand, so I will vote against it. But that's why.
All right. Other discussion? Councilman Schmidt?
Can I ask that the resolution be read so that everybody watching this publicly can at least know what we're voting on?
Okay, this is a motion to suspend the rules. We could, we're not really debating the motion yet, but the motion before us is to suspend the rules.
We can read it now, or we can do it after this vote.
Okay, we can read it now, if that would be helpful. Would the clerk?
A resolution introduced by council member Chad Man speaker relating to documents purporting to be a petition and proposed ordinance filed with the city clerk on October 8th, 2014. Whereas, on October 8th, 2014, documents purporting to be a petition and proposed ordinance were filed with the city clerk seeking to repeal ordinance number 19915, the Heartland Park ordinance, and whereas the documents requesting that the governing body either one, pass the ordinance repealing the Heartland Park ordinance within 20 days, or two, call a special election to submit to the electorate the proposed ordinance repealing the Heartland Park ordinance, and whereas, the election commissioner has determined that the purported petition contains 3,587 valid signatures, and whereas, the city attorney has recommended that the city pursue a declaratory judgment action requesting a determination from the district court whether the petition is valid. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Topeka, Kansas, that in light of the significant opposition by Topeka residents to the Heartland Park ordinance, the city attorney is directed not to pursue any litigation challenging the purported petition and/or proposed ordinance, including any declaratory judgment action.
Is there further discussion? Okay, this is a motion to suspend the rules in order to take action on this resolution this evening. All those in favor, vote yes; opposed, vote no.
We have three yes and six no.
Six having voted no, the rules are not suspended. Mr. Man speaker.
I'd like to make a second motion to suspend the rules, to pass a second resolution that would, that the city attorney can pass out to everybody, that calls for an election immediately, or, you can probably explain it better than I can, calls for repeal of the ordinance and/or an election on the ordinance.
Is there a second to the motion? Councilwoman Schwartz seconds. Perhaps we should have it read also, so that we would understand.
I just wanted to answer.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just answer Councilman Man speaker's question, I think he directed towards me. This resolution would call for a special election.
Okay.
It's not either or, it is calling for a special election, which is what I understood your direction to me to be.
Yep, we're good.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there discussion? Shall we have it read, so that everyone knows what's before us? Okay, if the clerk would read, please.
A resolution introduced by council member Chad Man speaker calling a special election to submit the proposed repeal of ordinance number 19915, the Heartland Park ordinance, to the electorate pursuant to KSA 12-3013. Whereas, on October 8th, 2014, a petition and proposed ordinance were filed with the city clerk pursuant to KSA 12-3013, seeking to repeal ordinance number 19915, the Heartland Park ordinance, and whereas, the election commissioner has determined that there are 3,587 valid signatures, which constitutes more than the number of signatures required by KSA 12-3013, and whereas, where there are, as there are sufficient signatures, KSA 12-3013 requires that the governing body either one, pass the ordinance repealing the Heartland Park ordinance within 20 days after the attachment of the city clerk's certificate to the petition, October 15th, 2014, or two, call a special election to submit to the electorate the proposed ordinance repealing the Heartland Park ordinance, and whereas, the governing body is not pursuing a judicial declaration of the petition's validity, including but not limited to whether the Heartland Park ordinance is either an administrative ordinance or an ordinance that is subject to referendum under KSA 12-17, 169B2. Now therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the city of Topeka, Kansas, that in light of the number of electors who have indicated a desire to vote on whether to repeal the Heartland Park ordinance, the governing body calls a special election to submit the proposed ordinance to the vote of the electors of the city of Topeka.
Thank you. Is there additional discussion? Councilman Ortiz?
I just want to be clear on the vote, this is the add it to the agenda, is that correct?
This is the suspend the rules.
To add it, right?
No, to suspend the rules, to take action on it tonight.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is the...
Just wanted to make sure.
Right, action of this motion would suspend the rules so that action could be taken this evening. Other discussion? All those in favor, vote yes; opposed, vote no.
We have three yes and six no.
Three having voted, or six having voted no, the ordinance or the resolution, the motion to suspend the rules does not pass. Are there other additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none, Councilwoman Hiller?
I would be happy to add an item for discussion of this, of Heartland Park. I would move to add a discussion item.
You're moving to add an item? We would say like item B under discussion, Heartland Park.
Yes.
Is there a second? Mr. Brown seconds. Is there discussion? All those in favor, vote yes; opposed, vote no. This would require a simple majority of five votes, five positive votes.
We have eight yes and one no.
Eight having voted yes, the item is added for, that would be item 6B. Are there other additions or deletions to the agenda? The other announcement, counsel, is that we do have, we will have two short executive sessions following the meeting, one on labor negotiations and one on potential litigation. We will then proceed with the consent agenda. Clerk would read.
A is a board appointment recommending the reappointment of Craig Strever to the Board of Mechanical Examiners Appeals for a term ending October 31st, 2016. B is a resolution introduced by council member Richard Harmon granting Chara Monholland an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945170 concerning noise provisions. C is minutes of the regular meeting of October 14th, 2014, and there are no applications this evening.
Thank you, counsel, that is the consent agenda, your pleasure. Councilman Harmon?
Thank you, Your Honor, I'd move approval of the consent agenda as read.
Councilman Harmon approves, moves to approve. Councilwoman Ortiz seconds, any discussion? All those in favor, vote yes; opposed, vote no.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the consent agenda is approved. I went to announce that Councilwoman Delisa had a major commitment tonight that required her to be away. She made the exception so that she could be here for the first part of the meeting, but then she will, she had to leave at this point. Proceed with the action items. A, expenditures.
A is an ordinance introduced by city manager Jim Colson allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of August 30th, 2014 through September 26th, 2014, and enumerating said expenditures therein.
Counsel, city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Approval would authorize expenditures in the amount of $13,691,981.59.
Counsel, your pleasure. Councilwoman Ortiz moves to approve. Councilman Brown seconds, discussion? All those in favor, vote yes; opposed, vote no.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the expenditures are approved. Action item 5B, neighborhood infrastructure approval.
B is a project budget in the amount of $1,400,000 and a resolution introduced by city manager Jim Colson authorizing improvement project T-601041, which provides for neighborhood infrastructure improvements in two target areas, the historic North Topeka East and Oakland neighborhoods as more specifically described herein.
Mr. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask Mr. Reef to come to the podium and provide information and answer any questions on this item.
Okay, Mr. Reef.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, Mr. City Manager. Before you tonight is a project budget and resolution for the second half of our neighborhood infrastructure projects for our two current sort target areas, the historic North Topeka East and the Oakland neighborhood. These projects were included in the neighborhood plans that were developed by the planning department and these two individual neighborhoods, which were then adopted by the council earlier this year. The project totaled $1.4 million and includes street repairs, alley repairs, and sidewalk repairs in historic North Topeka East and in the Oakland neighborhood, looking at improving the track at Chase Middle School and making improvements to Little Oakland Park. With that, I stand for questions, and staff recommends a motion to approve the resolution.
Other questions? Mr. Brown?
I have a question.
There are no questions, Mr. Brown?
I would move for approval.
Mr. Ortiz? Your second's...
Okay, where's Little Oakland Park at?
This would be about Chester and Fairchild.
Okay, that's what I thought, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Brown?
Mr. Mayor, I would move for approval on this.
Okay, Mr. Brown moves to approve, these are located in his district. Mrs. Hiller seconds, discussion? All those in favor, vote yes; opposed, vote no.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the project budget and resolution is approved. I want to acknowledge Mr. Frank Aguilar, seated back here, the president of the Oakland NIA. Thank you, Frank, for being here. We will proceed then to the non-action items. First, Mr. City manager? Any discussion? There are no applications, correct? So we are moving rapidly to the non-action items, first is a discussion item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask Mr. Fiander to step to the podium. What we're discussing is the land use and growth management plan for 2040. This would be an overview of the proposed updates of the growth plan as recommended by the Topeka Planning Commission.
Mr. Fiander?
Excuse me, thank you, Your Honor, council members, good evening. Tonight, we just want to have a brief discussion on land use and growth management plan. It is an update to our current plan, and I know many of you have, we have sat through a presentation of mine. We will not do that tonight, we actually have something a little different. We want to present to you a summary of this plan on a video tonight, and we'll go a little quicker, and hopefully give you the same ideas. Background, real quickly, the, this is a policy document. This is a policy document, which is really the foundation of all of our zoning and development decisions that the city makes. This is where the city and how and where the city grows. We started this about two years ago with an EPA Sustainable Communities Workshop, and it culminated last night in a recommendation to you from the Topeka Planning Commission for adoption, and this is the document that you have in front of you that was handed out tonight, that looks like, looks like this. So as I said, we're going to try something different, we'll give you an overview. We put a video together with the help of Susie Gilbert and our department and some others, that we took out to the community when we engaged them, and it seemed to get some fairly good feedback on this. If it cuts out to a baseball game, it's not, don't blame me. So, without further ado, are we ready?
We are transforming planning in the city of Topeka with an update to the city's land use and growth management plan. It's a fresh look at how and where the city grows and invests, and it's focused on fiscally responsible, sustainable planned growth.
The plan is about making a choice. We can choose to continue our current pattern of development, or we can choose to have a more fiscally responsible way of growing.
Topeka's Land Use and Growth Management Plan, our framework for the future. Smart growth in the city of Topeka starts with the newly updated Land Use and Growth Management Plan, an element of the city's overall comprehensive plan. The plan guides the future sequencing of growth in Topeka to ensure investments in infrastructure and services are in place prior to development.
The future growth of the city of Topeka is broken down into three tiers. The top tier is going to be the one with the most priority for investment, and that very simply is the city of Topeka's city limits.
Planning Director Bill Fiander says Topeka's footprint includes five basic services, police, fire, water, sewer, and roads.
And if all five of those services are either in place or are planned to be in place, then that's an area we should be growing into.
Tier one, Topeka's existing city limits, meets that definition.
To be sustainable, we have to have an urban density, and we have to have an urban pattern. To bring in areas that do not have that is not sustainable, and will only continue to undermine our core areas.
Tier one has seen its share of unbalanced investment. Not enough resources have been invested in our older areas, the spots that need it the most.
One of the biggest reasons to reinvest in our core neighborhoods is we've already made that down payment. The community has invested in this area.
This map shows residential building and demolition permits in the last 25 years. You can see most red dots, or demolitions, in the city's core, and most blue dots, single family homes, being built on the fringe of the city and beyond, a reflection of the disinvestment.
To invest, reinvest back in those core areas means to reuse the infrastructure, utilize the existing services that are already provided there to grow those areas back. There's no reason to abandon any of those.
One reason to reinvest is to increase our density. Population leakage and low-density sprawl means fewer residents sharing in the cost of services and makes those services more costly to provide. Since 1960, Topeka's land area has grown 65 percent while the city's population grew only 7 percent, meaning we're less dense.
We are growing at our borders horizontally with virtually the same population, and we're not as dense, we're not as compact, that's more costly for the city to provide services for.
On top of that, we've been sprawling beyond the city limits. The city's share of Shawnee County's population has continued to decline, and the population outside the city has more than doubled. In the last 50 years, only two out of every 10 new county residents moved inside the city. Compare that to Lawrence, where over the same time, eight out of 10 Douglas County residents moved into Lawrence.
If we would have kept that same share over the last 50 years, we would have had 23,000 more people, which would equate to probably $6 to $10 million a year in today's dollars, to better serve our infrastructure and our services within the current footprint.
Lax rules and regulations have led to unplanned growth, something that's exacerbated the sprawl. Moving towards sustainable growth requires a land use and growth management plan built on a foundation of smart growth and strategic investment.
If you're going to attract a younger population, and you're going to be able to retain a younger population and grow families and grow the community, you have to have a quality of life that will make them want to live here.
Pillars of the updated plan include promoting compact development, investing in place and where we already are. Mike Wilson, architect, developer, and president of Architect One, has been instrumental in several successful examples of infill and redevelopment projects.
We were able to create a wonderful architecturally-designed space that we couldn't really do in a new building.
Wilson talks about the benefits of where he put his business, 906 South Kansas Avenue in the heart of downtown Topeka.
The shell was good, location was great, and we are just thrilled to be down here.
Wilson and his crew also saved the historic Carlin Building next door, and the reinvestment paid off, increasing the property value there nearly tenfold.
We used to have our offices out in southwest part of the city, but we made a conscious choice to return to downtown. We liked the excitement, we really appreciate the fact that we can walk most anywhere, get whatever we need. Before, we had to get in our car. Downtown is a great example, it's the poster child, if you will, of compact development. You have all the elements here. It's mixed use, you have transportation choices, you can walk anywhere, you could bike, all within a very short distance. You can live here, work here, all in the same place. The same streets, the water lines, the sewer lines, the police, the fire are serving a much smaller area, but we're getting a lot more return on that investment.
Wilson also took an old junior high school in North Topeka, Curtis Junior High, and turned what was a shell, destined to be demolished, into an apartment facility for seniors and additional family housing. The redevelopment added more than $870,000 per acre to the property's appraised value. Wilson says he took advantage of historic tax credits and neighborhood revitalization assistance on the rehabs. Fiander says those are big incentives for reinvestment in our community's core. The biggest incentive, though, is where the city builds its infrastructure, and Fiander says the infrastructure and services are already in place for hundreds more reinvestment opportunities around town.
We have about 1,200 lots in new subdivisions within the city limits that have not been built on. That's another 4,000 potential people within the existing city limits. We've already made an investment in a down payment into. We need to realize we have the potential where we're at to unleash that value.
City planners worked with their technical advisory team to set more realistic population projections in the new plan. The current plan adopted in 2003 does plan for growth, but on a bloated scale that's not fiscally responsible or realistic. A new urban growth area, or UGA, is in addition to the updated plan. It sets a realistic and affordable footprint to grow into in the next 25 years. The areas most ready for annexation as part of the future city are labeled as tier two in the new plan. Tier two promotes a compact and sustainable approach where all five services of the city can be provided without significant investment. Beyond that, tier three of the UGA is an area that's not ready for inclusion in the city, but that should be planned for down the road. New recommended plating and utility rules will help make sure compact urban density is critical to the city's fiscal health can be achieved as the city grows into the future.
If we can provide transportation choices, housing choices, mixed-use neighborhoods, walkable neighborhoods, that actually ends up attracting younger cohorts that can come in and grow the community. All of those things take pressure off of our streets, it allows us to be more dense, more compact, and we can grow a population and serve it on the same infrastructure with the same resources as opposed to spreading out more.
Smart growth and sustainability, transforming Topeka with the city's Land Use and Growth Management Plan.
Excuse me, so thank you, just a few quick takeaways, and to have any, stand for any questions at this point, that were in the video and that are in the plan, three quick takeaways, again, top priority for growth is the city. City limits, and we call that tier one. It is part of our urban growth area, hasn't really been thought of like that before, to invest where we are, and not where we're not. The second takeaway, again, is then beyond that, the better plan for future growth that we can grow into outside the city by being, by implementing our subdivision and utility standards and updating those. And then lastly, along the way, bring forth those areas that are ready for, to be brought into the city, that have our five services, that don't need significant investment, and that can make us more compact. So those are really the, kind of the three guiding takeaways, and as I said, or maybe I didn't say, we are planning to come back in November, the next meeting, to present the recommendation from the planning commission as, for formal adoption.
Okay, I think, I certainly welcome this and support the work the planning commission, the planning department in developing this, putting it together. I think this is the forward-thinking direction, certainly the plan that the city needs, and I think the change from the past is certainly significant and shows a new direction. I know one of the points in there, it says, "The city's capital improvement plan should target investments within tier one to do the things you suggest, and we should consider crafting new incentives." So look forward to that possibility of the incentives that we can develop to help bring about this, the development that you're suggesting in tier one. Other questions, comments? Mr. Man speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is awesome. I think you've watched my votes on certain issues, mirror right up with this. As someone who represents a core sort of landlocked district within our city, this is definitely a priority for me, because when I talk to folks who ask why their water mains aren't getting fixed, this is the explanation that I give them, that we grew too fast in terms of geography, we expanded our infrastructure, we're not able to maintain what we have, so it's why we need to develop in instead of out. Last week, I was fortunate enough to do a ride-along with the Shawnee County Sheriff's Office, and they took me out to, and I'm going to get the street name wrong, it's a development off of Wannamaker. I don't know the year that it was passed, I don't know when it was put into place, but it's one of the, it's the peninsula. So citizens that don't live in that neighborhood may not know what exists out there, but what we have is a good portion, maybe two, three miles, maybe less, I don't know, I don't know the total road length, but there is quite a bit of city street that's built out there. There are city sewers, there are city water mains, there are all, all of this infrastructure was built for a developer who never developed the land. So the city has spent a significant portion of money developing a piece of property that never went anywhere. That's not good business, it's not sustainable business, and it doesn't benefit taxpayers who've been on the property tax rolls for a significant portion of time and have not seen those investments returned into their neighborhood. So I think this is, this is the right kind of plan, it's the right time for us to be thinking about this. Another, for instance, that I bring up, sort of showing a little bit of how behind the curve we are, in 1979, Portland, Oregon closed the boundaries of their city and said that the city would no longer expand beyond that boundary, that the only development that would take place would be inside the city boundaries. What you end up with now in Portland is a city that's surrounded by green space, that's surrounded by woods, that's surrounded by places for people to go spend time, but it's also caused the development of Portland, Oregon to be much more dense, and then to create the need for things like public infrastructure, public transit, things like that that become priorities because they're contained within a boundary. So I think in terms of how we plan and how we grow, this is, this is right on, this is exactly what we should be doing, and I commend you guys for your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments? Thank you, thank you for the presentation. We'll go to item B, which is a discussion. Councilwoman Hiller, if you'd like to open this.
Thank you, Mayor. I asked to have this added because we've had a tremendous number of comments publicly and privately from citizens who say, you know, I really don't understand what the deal is with Heartland Park. So what I'd like to do, one of the things I lead with is, look, the issue is, we've got $10 million of tax, future taxpayer money at risk here, we've got the risk of losing racing indefinitely, and/or some sort of entertainment economic development in South Topeka indefinitely. That's what we started looking at when this problem emerged. So I was... So, I was hoping that today, because there's so much, so many questions, that we could start from the top. The council, I think, is pretty familiar with it, but for the public, and just have the city manager or whoever you would suggest really just explain what challenges we saw that we faced and how we got there briefly with Heartland Park, what options we had, what we looked at back last spring and summer, and how and why we came up with the decision that we did on August 12th.
Okay. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Hiller, I think the approach that we will take is, I'll start with some general overview of where we started, where we are today. I'd like to then go to Mr. Gerber. Mr. Gerber could walk through some of the financial implications of the decision that we have brought forward, and then wrap up with Mr. Soblet to walk through some of the legal issues as to what's impacting the city on this particular deal. So, if I've said this several times, the city has been in a very deep financial hole pertaining to the Heartland Park situation for a very long time. There were some decisions that were made over the past 30 years, but certainly in 2006 that committed the city to a bond obligation that really never panned out. And as we stand today, if we were to continue under the current scenario, we would, we would end up with roughly $8.5 million to $10 million of unserviced debt. And that, those funds would be paid for by the city through property taxes of the city Topeka residents. So, under the existing scenario, the city will lose at least the $8 million. Under the proposed scenario with the expansion of the district, that would satisfy, that would fully satisfy that previous debt, the $8 to $10 million hole, plus whatever additional indebtedness that would be taken on, and that's $5 million. So, we would, we would cover not only the past debt, but the new debt under the, under the proposed scenario. I think what's important to note is, this isn't a wish list. This isn't a projected feasibility study. These are actual taxes that are being collected today in the, in the district. It would be a reallocation of state sales tax monies from the, from the state's coffers to the city's coffers. It's not built on a hope and a prayer. It's built on actual historical numbers. The, the majority of that current debt is being paid for by city of Topeka residents, their property taxes. If we, if we stayed under the existing scenario, we would have to, within our own internal budget, as the debt has increased, probably transfer approximately about a mil of property taxes from city services to satisfying the debt of Heartland Park. That was the motivation that we had of going into that. And I think it's very important to say that there are no new taxes. We've heard several people say that the city's increasing the taxes to buy Heartland Park. There is no increase in taxes. Not one individual, not one business is going to have their taxes increased. It merely is reallocating the funds that are currently being collected from the state to the city. And the legal, legal aspects of this deal are highly complex. This isn't simply the matter of a bailout. This is an, a real estate transaction that there are legally held positions, and I'm specifically talking about the current operator has a reversionary interest provision on the property that, that does not go away except for if we acquire it, which we're talking about doing, or if we go through a long, complex legal battle that will certainly have the impact of forcing the property to go dark and losing NHRA and all of the other economic activity that's there. So, at this point, to get a little more information about the finances, I'll ask Doug to present some information.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, thank you. I would maybe reiterate one point that the city manager made and then add one new point. I don't think we can say enough, moving forward, we have, we have a hole in our budget. We have a hole right now, and we have a hole moving forward if the district continues as it is. That hole is over $8 million. As someone who has a team who's charged with making sure we manage our finances correctly and appropriately, that scares me is how you find that money and how you take a mil of property tax from somewhere else to allocate it towards that debt, and that's, should be a scary proposition for all of us, I think. The other thing that I think is worth adding, and again, I don't, also don't think can be said enough, is that if the Starbond District is expanded based on real, actual numbers of existing businesses, we would generate $16.4 million in state sales tax matched by 1.6 million in city sales tax. So, as we've talked about previously, that is essentially a 10-to-1 investment return, return on investment. I think that's a deal any individual and certainly any city ought to be willing to make. So, moving forward, if the district is expanded, $6.4 million in state revenues, that helps fill that existing and moving forward budget gap, which is something we sorely need.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, council. I'm going to start this off by saying that there may be questions that are asked of me that I can't answer in this forum, and I want to state for the public, for the news media here, there are attorney-client privileged communications, and I am ethically bound not to waive those. So, if there are questions that I can't answer, I just wanted to be clear, I would love to be able to answer those questions in a public forum, but I'm ethically bound not to do that. So, I just wanted to state that upfront. I can't give legal commentary on statutes and different things, but in terms of direct advice that Mayor or anybody on my staff has given this body, I unfortunately can't divulge that in an open session. And to be clear, that my client is a municipal corporation, which is the city of Topeka, which is this governing body. So, I just wanted to state that. Going back a few things that have already been discussed is, in order to have a Starbond District, you have to have a plan. It's almost, you have to have two detangles. You have to have a district and you have to have a plan. So, I've heard a lot of commentary about, why can't we just expand the district? Well, because we have to have a plan, and the plan that we've been told by the Department of Commerce that they would approve is the acquisition of real property, the acquisition of Heartland Park, the reversionary interest, and the, clearing the debt associated with it, that they want a functioning Heartland Park, one that is generating revenue. It's, the Department of Commerce has positioned that Heartland Park is the gem of the state of Kansas. It draws lots of visitors outside of the state that they want to see continue, and in order to do that, you have to have those two pieces. You have to have the plan and the expansion. We've also heard, well, why don't we just sell off Heartland Park? Well, that's great, but if somebody sold Heartland Park tomorrow, which they can't do because we have a memorandum of understanding, we don't have $16.4 million in state sales tax revenues. That's gone, that you have to have both of those pieces. So, again, the plan that's been put forth, that's been approved by the Department of Commerce, been approved by this body, and consented to by the County Commission, been agreed to by all the parties, would generate that $16.4 million in this plan that's before you. There is no alternate plan. There were days, months, not days, months of discussions about how this deal was going to come together, and we have to, we can't do this on our own. There has to be an approval by the Department of Commerce, and this is the plan that the state of Kansas has said that they would approve. And that's why, that, that was the plan that was put forth in front of this body and approved by all those entities. So, just in terms of the legal aspects, it's, it's a plan with the expansion of the district. The carrot for the city of Topeka, for the taxpayers of the city of Topeka, is that we get that $16.4 million of sales tax revenue. Now, there was, has been some questions, is this really new revenue? Is this shifting? You know, what really is this? What this is, the $16.4 million, is revenue that is not coming in to the city's coffers at this point. This is new money. Now, and I would ask Mr. Gerber, part of this is city sales tax, but the vast majority of it is state sales tax that is currently not coming in the city coffers. And I don't know if you have those numbers, Doug, in terms of what percentage is existing city sales tax and what's state sales tax.
Mr. Mayor, with your permission, the city sales, or state sales tax itself would generate $16.4 million. There'd be an additional $1.6 million in city sales tax for a total of about approximately $18 million over the life of the district.
And that would be over a span of?
Twelve years.
Yeah, 15 to 25, 2015 to 2025.
Okay.
10 years.
10 years.
11 years.
So, because I'm not a finance person to kind of interpret that, the $16.4 million is new money, the 1.6 is the existing city sales tax. So, we are getting $16.4 million of new revenue the city is currently not collecting to address debt service in regards to Heartland Park. So, in terms of the legal aspects, again, you have to have both of those in order to move forward. We all know that Mr. Emming came forward with a petition, and it's unclear at this point what that is. I mean, honestly, and I would go back to the third-party analysis that was done, that was made public, available to the media by Lathrop Engage, that pointed out several issues. Again, I can't go into my advice to council, but I can discuss what the issues are the Lathrop Engage identified as a third party to evaluate the petition. The first issue they identified was the certification. There's been light made in the newspaper that the certification is just dotting the i's and crossing the t's. I would submit to you, that's not correct. There are more than 14 Attorney General's opinions, and again, this isn't related directly to Heartland Park. I'm just talking about petition certification and making commentary on the law, not any advice that I have given council and just referencing the third-party document, that there's 14 Attorney General's opinions that say that you have to have strict compliance with the language of the certification. The 10th Circuit found that when you use the word resident, that's unconstitutional, a violation of the First Amendment, and the legislative history on certification shows that former Attorney General Steve Seck, former Secretary of State Diggs, and Chris Kobach all testified in front of the committee and said they believe the resident language was unconstitutional, and that's why it was changed. Now, I'm not going to get into politics, but those are people with some pretty diverse views from different areas of the state that all testified it was unconstitutional. So, to make the statement that, you know, this is a technicality, again, I'm just talking about the statute itself and what it requires. Commentary on that statute, I think it goes well beyond that. It's not even a matter of statutory construction or that it, you know, there's a word here or there that's different than the statute. I mean, the courts have spoken clearly that there's a constitutional issue there. Another issue that was brought up by the third party who evaluated this was that the petition that was circulated, the ordinance wasn't attached to it. The purpose of that, according to the third-party evaluator and the legislative history, is so people are informed when they sign a petition, that to simply say, "Sign this petition" without attaching the actual ordinance that states what the petition is, is problematic because that's a guarantee that people know what it is that they're signing. There's other issues that I'm not going to go into because they would become privileged. The last thing I will say, again, this is just commentary on elections in the state of Kansas. In order to hold a valid election, you either have to have a statute or you have to have a valid petition. We can't just decide next week, you know, the city of Topeka wants to have an election in 60 days on whether to ban dogs in the city. That we have to have some statutory authority in order to hold an election or a valid petition. We've been informed that by a third party, that the petition is not valid. That's the legal recommendation to us, is the petition is not valid, therefore, we have to have an authority in order to have an election that has any force or authority behind it. And one more comment I was going to make, and it just escaped me, but the, the comments that I've made, again, are just simply legal commentary based on what's been provided to us by the third party and just legal commentary on the statute.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just wrap up the staff comments on this. There were, there were several comments that were made that the city was trying to take over Heartland Park, that we were going to create a Department of Racing. Certainly has never been the intent of, of this body to do that. Certainly, the city manager and his staff doesn't have that intent either. We've been very clear about that. It's not a budgeted item. We certainly couldn't afford to do that. We have been engaged in preliminary conversations to initially determine the feasibility of Heartland Park as a, a racing and entertainment venue, and have been continually encouraged along the way that, that Heartland Park is held in high esteem by a lot of operators who, who know racing. I certainly don't. We have continued to engage in conversations and have worked ourself to being prepared to let out an RFP. It's kind of hard to hold some of these people back. We've had very serious conversations with at least three operators who have significant money, significant experience, and a very strong desire to, to come into Heartland Park and operate it. And the challenge that we're having now is the NHRA races upon us at Memorial Day weekend next year, and there are a lot of activities that need to occur between now and then, more on the now side, to, to make it feasible and financially successful. So, our concern is that the longer we delay going forward on this, we could lose an owner-operator, we could lose the NHRA, we could lose all of the racing activities. But at the end of the day, we want to do what's legal and what's, what is correct. We believe that the recommendation that's been brought forward and the actions taken by staff and this body to this point have really been the only reasonable way to proceed. Our recommendation is to move towards a very expedient declaration by the judge to make a determination as to whether the position as established by the third-party objective legal firm is correct, and if they're correct, we believe that that clears the way to go forward. If they make a determination that the petition is indeed legal, then we would proceed accordingly.
Okay. Are there other comments, questions, Councilman Schmidt? I was asking the council members first, if they have, before we go back, if they have any questions or comments. Ms. Hiller?
I'm going to raise one issue. I hope that my colleagues will raise them as well. We've all heard a lot of questions, and one of the things that we asked early on and that we continue to get questions or concerns about is whether racing, particularly 60 miles away from the Kansas Speedway, is viable. And some people are saying, well, you know, racing's really on its way out and it's dropping off, and others are saying, you know what, the way they're developing now, as you develop a secondary Speedway that, or racetrack that's close to one, could you talk about the viability? You talked a little bit about it, but could you talk a little more about the viability of racing as something that could be successful in Topeka, Kansas?
Mayor, Councilmember Hiller, as indicated, we, that has been one of the primary focuses of any conversation, and we started with people who were in the business and knew about the business, have continued to move forward. We have three people who make their livelihood operating racetracks who are, they haven't made an offer yet because that opportunity is not available, but they're, they've indicated an interest. I can say very strongly that if we didn't get a professional operator to step in and operate this, I think that would be a pretty good sign to us that we probably shouldn't do it either.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Schmidt. I'm sorry, Councilman Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of my questions has to do with the fact that we are 8 million in the hole. The original study that put Heartland out for the, the city to put up and build in the first place, there was a study that predicted that that 8 million would be covered by the Starbond District, and yet it's not. So, what do we have faith in that we will have 16 million from expanding the Starbond District?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Councilmember Schwartz, I don't think I can say this strong enough. This is not hope and dreams. We hope- We hope, if we build it, they will come. This is existing sales tax revenue that is being collected today based on historical data. We've worked with the Department of Revenue, and we have validated that the funds that are being collected in the district today, based on the incremental value going back to 2005, that this sales tax is actually being collected today. There's no new development that would need to occur. There's nothing that would have to happen differently than maintaining the status quo to continue to collect the sales tax. So, this is, I can't comment on decisions that were made in 2006. We've all spent a lot of time dealing with issues from the past, but we believe that this is a very solid business decision based on very solid data.
Follow-up, then, would be, why could we not go after those people that predicted this? And Chad had kind of explained this, and I'd like him to explain again to me the, why we could not sue the original study presenters that said we would collect that eight million dollars.
The attorney, you wish to respond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will not comment about specific advice I've given, but what I will comment on is generally feasibility studies and litigation involving feasibility studies. The feasibility study that was done in 2005 was based on the economic climate at that point in time. It was based on future development on the part of several different entities, and took a look at what this could look like in the future. If somebody was to take issue with any feasibility study, they would essentially have to say that they knowingly misled that party. That, again, the difference between what we're looking at now is actual tax dollars that are being collected. If there is not, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if there is not a dime of development in the new district or around Heartland Park, and things stay static, those are the sales taxes that are being collected. So, it's the difference between looking at multiple years of data, sales tax collections versus a study that was done in 2005 that said, "If, and if, and if, and if, then this will happen." And that's the difference between what we're looking at now, what we're looking at in 2005.
Councilman Schmidt?
I want to expand on that point a little bit, because this is one of the biggest misperceptions that's out there, that people think, "Why would we do the same thing that we did in the past?" And I'll pose this in the form of a very long question. Normally, what's done with the Starbond District is that a project is identified, whether it be legends in Kansas City, a baseball fielder, or anything like that. Studies are done projecting future economic growth that comes out of that, and the Starbond District is then created by taking a cap of what is collected in state sales tax and city sales tax before that project was, before they started that project. In our case, it would be 2005. And then, any increase in sales taxes over that 2005 baseline is what goes to pay off the star bonds that were issued. Normally, that involves projecting out economic growth and economic improvement. That is what was done in 2006, and it was obviously wrong. It has failed to meet those expectations in every case and every year so far. What we're doing now is that we have negotiated a deal with the Department of Commerce that is allowing us to essentially do the same thing that you would normally do when you issue new star bonds, except that we get to use the 2005 number, which means that we already know what it's producing since 2005 over that number. And that, I think, is a huge difference. This is not a projection. The number that we're basing this on is based on performance and not projection. Do I have that correct? Am I understanding the difference between issuing a bonds for a new project and the deal that we've negotiated correct?
Would there be an answer to that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember Schmidt. Yes, you are absolutely correct. The benefit that we have is we're not looking forward, we're really using the 2020 hindsight in this particular case. Now, these numbers have been validated and verified by an independent third-party also that we brought in to make sure that the numbers were real.
Okay, Mr. Schmidt.
To add on to that, I would further like to point out that in the petition challenging this action, the petitioner who organized this petition in front of a room full of people at the Topeka Public Library on the day that he organized this petition did not dispute those numbers. He agreed with those numbers. That was not the basis of his petition. He does not dispute those numbers, or he hasn't disputed those numbers to this point, and he publicly said that he agreed with them. He works with numbers in acquisitions, so I would assume that he has a pretty good understanding of those two. So, I just want to make sure that that part is clear as well.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. City staff has already spoke to the potential hole in the budget where we would have to figure out how to cover that eight million dollars of loss. They've already spoken about the 16.4 million that is available to us through the Starbond District, and I would ask them if they would follow up with some comments on the $160 million about economic activity associated with Heartland Park as it currently exists. I've had, I've seen some comments that some people take issue with that number. I'd like you to speak to that, and obviously, not all of that economic activity is money coming in from out of town, but I would assume a good portion of that is. So, if you could comment on that also, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Brown, regarding that number, that $160 million economic impact on the city of Topeka, that number was generated similar to the, you know, the folks that reviewed our numbers. That was done by an independent third-party, someone with no stake in the game, someone who didn't have anything to gain by manipulating the numbers, and they came up with that number suggesting that that was the impact on the Topeka community. That would include, you know, sales tax generated, hotel nights, restaurant visits, all sorts, all those types of associated things. So, we believe it to be, we don't have any reason to question the validity of that number as it was generated by an independent third-party.
So, as a follow-up, if that was to cease, as the financial manager and the city manager, what would be your expectations of the effect of that economic activity ceasing?
Mr. Mayor, and so I want to be careful that we don't walk too far down the edge, the end of a limb here. I don't know that, I mean, unless you have a number. I don't think that we would have that number, and making it up at this particular point would be highly unadvisable.
Mr. Man Speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What's been the rate of repayment for the star bonds as they stand right now, percentage year to year?
Mr. Man Speaker, Mr. Mayor, by rate of repayment, do you just simply mean?
So, how much have we repaid on the bonds thus far, year to year?
So, for example, if I understand your question, for example, last year, the Starbond District itself, in 2013, generated 203,000 in revenue.
So, if I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, arguably, we're not paying for our obligation currently with the money that's being generated out of the Starbond District.
That is correct.
That is correct.
We are not meeting our debt service obligation.
Okay. So, the concern that I have, and I don't think, last week, I tried to be nice to the city staff, and that was totally misinterpreted. I understand your challenge. I completely get it. The reality from my perspective, though, is that you have a duty and an obligation to protect the city and its financial interests. This body doesn't necessarily have the exact same obligation. They are elected by the electorate to speak on their behalf and to represent their interests, which is arguably what I attempted to do earlier, but was not successful. The concerns that I've heard expressed repeatedly, and I don't think they're wrong, is that we're adding more debt to already existing debt, and adding that debt puts us into a bit of a bind. And that's the concern that I've heard from lots and lots of folks. I have no issue with the Starbonds District. I have no issue with this expansion. Arguably, it's going to save the taxpayers' money. I do have issue with us purchasing the reversionary interest, because it's a lot of money that we're adding to a heap. Heartland Park, NHRA, year to year, the attendance is dropping. The people who are watching racing, it's not a booming sport. It's not up and coming. It's not this saving grace. You had, you know, for many years, you've seen, I've seen across the country where communities push a professional sporting outfit onto the voters, be it a new stadium, or a dome, or anything of this nature, with the argument of, "We're going to reap the return from it." Well, what's happening right now, they bid the Winter Olympics for 2022. They only had two communities actually bid on it. I think Oslo, Sweden, or whatever, Norvegia, or whatever, nor we, I don't even know the country where Oslo is, but they dropped out. So, now we have Beijing, China, and I believe Kazakhstan are the only two entities that are bidding on this contract, because there's no cost-benefit analysis, there's no return on investment that proves that investing this much capital into infrastructure, in developing a stadium, in developing facilities to utilize, will ever be reaped back upon the community. These are very valid questions. So, to make this argument of, "Why do we have to do it this way and say, 'This is the only way we can do it,'" I think is incredibly limiting. I think that there are lots of options on how we proceed and move forward. What this body did, and I don't include myself in that because I wasn't in the majority, what this body did was to choose to move forward with the existing plan as it was presented to us a few months ago. My concern is that that was not the best deal we could have gotten. One of the first comments I made about this vote months ago was, "This was not a good deal for the taxpayers." I still continue to feel like this was not the best deal for the taxpayers. Now, it can be argued to me that this could cost us eight million dollars. I don't think that that's actually going to happen. I think that we have opportunities and options that could have been explored, but now we've really backed ourselves into a corner, which is incredibly unfortunate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember Man Speaker. What you say is correct, except for the context is wrong here. If we were talking, if we were coming to this body and saying, "We have this really great idea. We want to build a racetrack because it's going to bring all this economic development," we wouldn't do that, because many of the comments that you make in terms of projections of sports facilities have a lot of familiarity and understanding of those. They don't work, and they only work if you tie it with some other development that is going forward. In this particular case, though, we're talking about an existing taxing base that is not dependent, to a great degree, on the success or failure of the racing venue. The racing venue has not performed to the degree all we would like it to perform at, but they're already generating those taxes. So, as Councilmember Schmidt had identified, in a very good way, we're going back historically to 2005, and we're looking at the incremental value, and that's the sales tax that we are, we're counting on for this. So, yes, your comments are right, but they're not correct in this particular context. Yes, there's additional debt that we're taking on, and that is part of the deal to clear up the, to clear up the reversionary interest in the acquisition on this particular property, but that does provide us for incremental growth going forward. But any incremental growth that occurs is going to be additional revenue that's going to be generated and has not been counted in the numbers that we're using here.
Okay.
Mr. Gerber, have the bonds, the bond repayment ever met what they were supposed to meet in the last however many years that we've had this thing open?
No.
So, the Starbonds District has never repaid what it was set up to repay. That's the concern. I mean, that's a real valid concern. I realize that the revenue is on the table, that we can generate it, that it exists, but I'm pretty sure, and I wasn't here or paying attention 12, 13, 14 years ago, I don't know how it was pitched to the public back then, but I'm guessing the same thing was said. And so, when we do what we've done, the way we've done it, the trust of the public becomes the major concern. They have to believe that we know we can accomplish this, and I'm not certain they believe we know we can accomplish it.
Yes, Mr. Soblet?
Mr. Man Speaker, just to clarify a few issues, I had reason to review the feasibility study today that was done in 2005, read the entire thing, so maybe I can help talk about the difference between the two. The feasibility study that was done in 2005, as I stated earlier, was based completely on future development, on a multi-use facility being built around Heartland Park, by an office park being made, by retail being built around Heartland Park. It was all based on, "If you do this, and if this happens," and based on continued growth in the economy, you can expect to repay the bonds. So, again, the feasibility study in 2005, I don't know how it was pitched to the council either, but I can tell you what it says, and that it was signed off on, is that it was all based on growth. It was all based on future. It wasn't based on, "If the track performs at the level it's performing at right now, you're going to repay the bonds." The difference is, what we're telling you, I've had trouble even calling it a feasibility study, because that's not what it is, what we're talking to you about. And Mr. Gerber can tell me if I'm wrong, but essentially, you've seen the Starbond District, what the expanded district would be. Each parcel in that district was examined to determine what is the sales tax revenue that each parcel is generating over the past 2005 on. It's not, "If there's additional growth in this district, then you're going to get this." No, it's, each parcel was looked at individually within that district, and it was looked at historically, how is it performing, including Heartland Park. And if Heartland Park performs no better than it is today, than it did last year, than it did the year before, you generate the 16.4 million dollars. So, it's not a pipe dream, if there's 10 million dollars in development. It's parcel-by-parcel examination of historic performance with the assumption that Heartland Park performs no better than it is today. And the majority of that district, as we've shown the maps, and we can show them again, but the majority of that district does not include Heartland Park. It includes Topeka Boulevard. So, I just wanted to address those issues.
Mr. Harmon was?
Thank you. Chad, the Soblet, how long has the city held feasible title to the racetrack?
Since the Lario brothers took over, I want to say in the late, in the late 80s, I believe. Thank you, Councilman.
Okay, so the city has owned the racetrack since 1988?
The city, well, just to give some explanation to that, on paper, the city is the owner of that property, but over the years, there've been a number of liens that have been placed on that racetrack that, not that this body agreed to, but that had been agreed to previously, and a reversionary interest was granted to Mr. Irwin. So, you can look, you can go and do a title search and look, and it says the city of Topeka owns that, but I have explained, essentially, it's like a house with seven mortgages on it to seven different mortgage companies. But on paper, yes, we own it, but it is mortgaged up.
Okay. And I'll direct this to Mr. Gerber. To try to simplify the complex financial arrangement, is that accurate, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we have an eight million dollar shortfall, or hole, that we're looking at. We essentially have two choices before us to fill that eight million dollar hole. We can either go to the property taxpayers of Topeka and say, "We're going to increase your... your taxes in order to pay that shortfall, that $8 million shortfall, or we can go to the state of Kansas, and let the state of Kansas pay that $8 million shortfall. Is that accurate? Or is it too simplistic?
I think we have a number of options. I want to clarify a couple of things. The $8 million hole is, of course, moving forward over the life of the district, so that's between now and 2025, still an $8 million hole. But in simplistic terms, yes, you're correct. We would either have the option to expand the Star Bond District, to generate that through approximately a mill of property tax levy every year, or to reduce services somehow.
So if I could follow up, Your Honor. So by expanding the Star Bond District, what we're really doing is having the state of Kansas forfeit sales tax revenue that would go to pay off those bonds.
That's correct. In a number of presentations I've given on this subject, one of the things I've tried to emphasize is, we're asking 3 million Kansans to participate, instead of 130,000 Topekins.
Okay.
And that seems like a better deal for us.
Agreed. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yes. Councilman Schmidt.
I have two questions. The first one is, the amount of money that would be generated under, if the bond, or the bond district, expanded bond district performs as it is?
Excuse me. I have two quick questions. The amount of money that would be generated if the expanded bond district goes into effect, and it performs as it's performing right now, I know it's 16.4 million from the state, but including the city tax total, it would be...
Mr. Schmidt, that would be 18 million, so 16, 4 and 1.6.
So 18 million total. Okay. So if we have an $8 million hole in our budget now, and tell me if this sounds reasonably accurate, if we have an $18 million, or an $8 million hole right now, that we have to pay, that's going to come out of property taxes, and we go through this deal, and I think, you know, it's important to recognize that there is risk in this deal, and as Councilman Mannspeak said, yes, we have been down this road in the path, but in order for us to be worse off at the end of this deal, for the next 10 years, that expanded district would have to perform, would have to have a recession essentially, where it would lose over 50%, 18 million divided by 2 would be 9, so over 50% of its economic activity disappear every year for the next 10 years, which would leave us with $9 million, which would still be better than the position that we're in now, to pay off those debts. But it would have to go, it would have to go more than 50% then, in a reduction, for us to not be better off than we are today. Is that correct? That was kind of convoluted, I know.
As you've presented that, Mr. Schmidt, yes, that's correct, in addition to the fact that then, at the end of the process, we would have the reversionary agreement taken care of, and we'd have fee simple title.
So while that is risk, and I think it's important to say that that is risk, there is risk that that entire area could be leveled in an earthquake, and we would lose, every year for the next 10 years, and we would lose all of that money. That is risk, but we have to look at the risk, not all risk is the same. You know, there's not much chance that I'm going to be taking the mound for the Royals during the World Series. You know, there is a pretty good chance that I'm going to walk out of here tonight. Those are different risks, and I think it's important to realize that we're not doing the same thing. This is not an apples-to-apples comparison, when we talk about what we did in 2005 and 2006, to what we're doing now. And to present it that way, I think is grossly irresponsible, is fiscally irresponsible, and unfortunately, it seems to be the perception that's gotten out there. And I think we need to correct that. I think everybody needs to be made aware that this isn't a high-risk venture. It's not a no-risk venture, but it isn't a high-risk venture. It is the best possible path out of a situation that is not good for anyone. None of us want to be here, none of us want to do this, none of us want to be a part of this, but we're here. We don't have a choice on that. This is the least risky option out of that situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. I think I read in the paper that the county councillor was quoted as saying that he hoped that the petition was valid enough and would go forward. So if we filed tomorrow to question the validity in order to not get everything tied up in court, because it may not be a valid petition, can you tell us what the timeframe would be, that if the judge rules that it's not, that it is valid, it's, you know, we have, the voters that signed this have the right to go, to put the question on the ballot? I just want some timeframes as to what, what if the judge rules that it's not valid? What if the judge rules it is valid? What happens next? I know the city manager made the comment that it would clear the way to proceed with the discussions that we've had so far with the track, but what happens if the judge does rule that it is valid?
Mr. Soblet.
I don't know if this is a question for the city manager or myself, but I think, no matter what the judge decides, we bring that back to the governing body, because we had, no matter if he decides it's valid, it's not valid, we bring that back to the governing body and have a discussion about, you know, depends what the reasoning is, why they found it valid, why they didn't find it valid, I think this body would probably appreciate a discussion about what that decision really means.
Okay. Mr. Schmidt.
One further question, regarding the legality of this petition, and of us trying to stop, or to get a judicial ruling on whether this is a valid petition or not, and the potential to be sued. I would ask if we could mention that we have already had mentioned to us, a strong possibility of a lawsuit, were we to not pursue the action that we're pursuing right now?
Mr. Mayor, yes, we received a letter late this afternoon, from the law firm of Freedon Unrined and Forbes, stating clearly that if we move forward with an election, or take any action based on the petition that's put forth, that they will file a lawsuit against the city. And to put that into some context, and file a lawsuit because we were calling it an election based on an invalid petition, evidently, they've looked at the petition as well, and made their determination, they discussed the Lathrop Engage opinion that was given to us and released, that the petition, that according to Lathrop Engage, the petition is not valid. So they would sue the city to either enjoin us, get a, from holding an election, or to invalidate the results of the election. I think the information's been, it's been out there, but just to say, once again, to hold a special election calls would be between $168,000 and $200,000. So you're spending that amount of taxpayer money to call a special election, which Lathrop Engage has stated, in their opinion, would be based on an invalid petition. We've got the, essentially, cease and desist letter from Freedon Unrined and Forbes, saying if you move forward on an election, or repeal that, we will file a lawsuit against the city to stop that action, because the petition is invalid. So that's kind of where we stand on the issue of potential litigation, and that is a public document. I obviously have no attorney-client privilege with Freedon Unrined and Forbes.
So to summarize, if we don't proceed in the manner that we have proposed, we are, there's a very strong likelihood in print that we will be sued. And that we will be sued, and that they will sue to make the results of any election held invalid.
Yes, they will sue, they will sue based on what they've stated in the letter, as a breach of contract in the memorandum of understanding, and also to invalidate the election, because our only authority would be an unlawful petition.
Thank you. Other, Mrs. Hiller.
As much as you could discuss it, one of the things, too, is that the very ordinance that's in question has some dates in it that have to be met for that whole process to go forward. If I'm not mistaken, the last date in line is that the whole things, the process has to be completed by February 1st. So it does put us under the gun. Fortunately, we can get through court quickly and find out the answer there, but we would have to, if we're going to do anything differently, we'd have to do it quickly. Otherwise, this deal will fall apart, and we will likely not have a racetrack, and not have anything to vote on. But in simple terms, correct?
The memorandum of understanding, I believe the date's February 1st, the deal has to be completed by then, that's the agreement of all the parties. If it's not completed by then, then it essentially falls apart. Court first has stated they'll foreclose, there's no expanded district, and the Heartland Park goes to foreclosure, so.
Mr. Mannspeak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a point of clarity, the Lathrop Engage document that's been presented is referred to as an opinion.
Yes.
And so, basically, what any lawyer tends to give is opinion, and the only way that it becomes fact is when it goes before a judge, and the judge rules on it and says, this is the fact. Am I correct?
Correct.
So, I'm just throwing that out there, so that everybody understands, we are operating off of opinion, and I think that that's important to understand. Thank you.
Mrs. Hiller.
I, I'll give a wrap-up statement if somebody else has a comment, that's fine. I really appreciate that all of us on the council and the staff having this conversation. I think it's been really important to get the word out. I am also quite sure that there are still a lot of questions in people's minds, and so I want to encourage, I believe there's another CJ online chance for people to ask questions and get answers on Thursday, is that correct?
Yes, Councilwoman, that's correct, and it's set for two hours this time, instead of just 45 minutes.
Two hours, and what time should people look for?
I believe it's 11 to 1, but I would, yes.
11 to 1 on Thursday, and then, all of us have fielded a lot of calls, and I'll speak for myself, but I think I can speak for the others. If people have questions that are unanswered, they get hold of their council people, or get hold of the city manager's office, they can either get those answers directly, or we'll get them for people the best that we can. It is complicated, and we covered a lot of ground tonight, but certainly not all the questions and answers that are out there. Thank you.
Any other comments on this discussion item? Mr. Schmidt.
Just one quick, I guess, point of order comment. Since this is a, this was added to the agenda, do we have open public comment on this?
Yes.
Even though it's a discussion item?
Yes, we can.
I think we should open the floor to that, then.
All right. If we have someone in the audience, I know, actually, and Joanne, if you'd want to speak now, you're on for public comment that we're going to have later in the evening, but if you'd like to take this opportunity, if it's on this subject, to go ahead and address the council at this time.
Yes, you're right, I was on for public comments, but I can make those comments now.
Okay, thank you.
And I appreciate the fact that you realize that anybody can make a public comment about this issue, because it was only added tonight.
Yes, that's correct, yes.
So, my, I have several comments, but the ones I had for there, I'm not going to have. I was one of those people that carried the petition. I carried the petition because I was in favor of the racetrack. I remember when Mayor Felker was taking people out there by the busload, city busload, dignitaries and entrepreneurs and racecar drivers, and he was so excited about this, and his excitement was contagious. And I supported the racetrack then, I was sorry it fell into disrepair, but I did think it should be a democratic process, rather than an administrative process, and that's why I carried the petition. I learned so much about how your constituents feel about you folks. It is amazing, and I'm not sorry I carried the petition, but I will tell you, their confidence in you is really low. The item that you were talking about, excuse me, the benefit district for the South Topeka, people are leaving that, you know, we lost a pool hall just recently, we've got two other businesses that are going to be moving out, I don't know where this money is going to be coming from, from the sales tax revenue on that area. Why won't you let the citizens vote on it? You don't have any confidence in your constituents? You know, if you've got, what, three months and 10 days, by February 1st, to call an election, only 5% of the people, the registered voters, sign that petition, you don't have enough confidence, think the other 95% might want to have that racetrack, and might want to have this benefit district? Why won't you let us vote on it? You've got plenty of time. It's, what, 60 days that you have to call it? It could be a mail-in ballot, and yes, it would probably cost $150,000, but if the judge votes in favor of the city, do you think these petitioners are going to quit? No, they're going to ask it to go to a higher court. And if you think that you have disrespect from your constituents, the disrespect that you have by the attorneys in this town is even lower. I think we can get an attorney pro bono. You'll have to hire an attorney, because from what I read about the emails, your current city attorney could not handle that issue. It doesn't make any sense, it's not economically feasible for you not to let the citizens vote. Thank you very much, I hope you'll understand what I'm saying.
Thank you for your comments.
I am so disappointed, I would just say, shame on you, shame on you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there other members of the audience who wish to speak on this issue? Yes, come forward.
My name's Leo Heifner, and I live in Representative Schwartz's district at 6115 Southwest 38th Street. And I have a number of questions about this, which I don't want to raise them all tonight, but there are some comments that I think you all need to think about, in terms of policy and going forward with this, because I think you're setting a horrible, horrible precedent by doing this. And what I mean by that is, why are we buying a private business? Government does not have any authority, in my mind, to be buying private businesses and getting into the realm of running them, because they think they can run them better, and make them more profitable. And the example that I used with Representative Schwartz is, suppose that Westridge Mall, which is every bit as much of an economic driver in the city of Topeka as Heartland Park is, loses a few more of its tenants, and they come to you and say, we're going to have to close up, we're going to leave town. Are you then going to issue bonds to buy Westridge Mall? So then, where does it stop? You, you know, you buy this one, you buy the next one, where does it stop? It's not government's responsibility to create economic activity, it's to support economic activity. And you do that through providing infrastructure, providing aid to businesses, not blocking them from being able to do the things that they need to do, but you don't buy them. So I think you need to think about that, because you are setting a precedent as you do this. And then the other thing that I would just like to say is, I don't think you're getting the full side of the story on the risk involved in this, because you're being told, we've got these bonds out here, and the new sales tax district will pay off the bonds, and I don't think that there's too many people that are really arguing whether that will pay off the bonds. pay off the bonds. The issue is, there are other costs involved in terms of managing and running that racetrack. Should there not be a buyer? And we keep saying, "We're proceeding under the assumption there's going to be a buyer." Well, I can remember years ago, as somebody who's lived in this town for 60-plus years now, I remember when Joan Wagnon had, when she was the mayor, she had a developer on the line who was going to develop Water Tower Place. Well, when certain things happened, the developer went away. And I think you ought to consider strongly the possibility here. You have all kinds of people who are interested in it until it comes down to the final thing, and then they disappear. That can happen again. So I just want to say that because I think you all need to hear these things and think about them.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Are there others who wish to speak on this issue?
My name is Chris Eming. I live at 5913 Southwest 10th Terrace here in Topeka, Kansas. Really hadn't come up to expect it to say anything tonight. I just came to hear about the burning permit stuff. That's the only reason I was here. That's an issue I'm kind of familiar with, too, and I think the fire department is doing a great job in that respect. My only, my only purpose for coming up now is when you talk about the petition, I know the city has to do what they have to do. I understand that. And the sooner that process happens and gets resolved, then we all can move down the road. But when I hear people talk about this as Eming's petition, if this were Eming's petition, you wouldn't be here tonight because I didn't gather enough signatures myself to make this work. And I told you, told some of you that at the start. I know Chad heard this, and others heard this as well. This couldn't have been done by one person, and I'll take credit for my wife's signatures as well, and we still wouldn't be, you know, to whatever number Chad understands, or I understand, or the county understands. It's only because people like Leo, who I'd never met before, Joanne, who I had heard of but never met before, came forward and went out and had petitions circulated and signed. And as it turns out, there were 68 other people besides Colleen and I doing this. Yeah, there were some family and friends, but they didn't, you know, they weren't enough to get us over the top either. But in any case, when you say this is Eming's petition, I'll take responsibility for any of the shortcomings. I'll gladly do that. That doesn't, that doesn't scare me, and the thought of lawsuits doesn't scare me as much as it seems to scare some other people. But I think you have a responsibility to do the right thing, and I think that's what you're doing. But this is really a reflection, the petition is a reflection of the effort of not only those 68 people that circulated petitions, but the thousands of people that came out to sign the petition. If there's ever been a petition in the city that's garnered more signatures, I'd like to hear it. I know the mayor, Wagnon, was real successful with an effort, but, so I was really surprised. You know, when we started out and we needed 2132, and I think the city attorney knew the number as well as I did, in spite of any confusion someone may have had about numbers, but that was a real challenge. You know, that number is not easy to do. And then, and then to think that you might need 2,900, as was suggested halfway through the process, and it was like, wow, we'll just never get there. But we ended up getting there. The county has certified it. I know the city has done some kind of review as well. So I guess that's the only point I'd make. You know, we started this wondering if this was just something that I had questions about. You know, the state law, obviously, it provides for petition. No one's disputing that. Whether the petition form ordered correctly or not, I don't know. The courts will settle that, I suppose. But we made a good-faith effort, and anyone that thinks it wasn't made in good faith just isn't, isn't stating things accurately. So that's my only point here tonight. I don't feel like I could let Joanne get up here with her years of experience and not come up and congratulate her, the other people that carried the petitions, because they're real, if there's credit, it goes to them. If there's blame, I'll gladly accept it. That doesn't, that doesn't bother me at all. So with that, I think we can look forward to, maybe we'll find out something tomorrow, huh, on a court case. I heard from one of the council member tonight, so we'll see how that goes, and then, and then people can move forward.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Man Speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to commend all three of you for carrying the petition. I once worked for a politician who used to say that politics is a contact sport, and it really is. I mean, to circulate a petition, I don't know if people quite understand the gravity of it, because it's not just anybody that can sign the petition. It has to be a registered voter, and they have to be currently registered. I mean, there's a lot that goes into it, obviously. The wording is an issue. But to have, sort of place all the blame on Mr. Eming's shoulders, 68 circulators, 3,900 signatures, I mean, the reality is, is that somebody had an impetus to want to do something about it, and it wasn't just Mr. Eming. It was lots and lots of other people. And I think that that's important, and I think that you all should be commended for engaging in democracy in such a way, because it's not easy, and it's not a task that should be taken lightly. But the reality is, is that everybody learns through the process. I've obviously learned, I think the folks that circulate the petition have learned, certain city staff has learned, but there's been a lot of moving parts here. So I hope we can come out with the best possible outcome for everybody. That is honestly my intent, and I think that's the intention of the petition holders, but I honestly think that's the intent of city staff as well. I think everybody has the best interests of our community at heart, no matter what the public perception is of how things are proceeding. I think everybody is just trying to do the right thing. So I think that's important to keep in mind as we move forward. Thank you.
Are there other members in the audience who wish to speak on this subject? Mr. Schmidt?
I just wanted to address something that was said. I agree completely that, that I think the intentions of the people involved here are above board and good intentions, and I include this body and city staff in that as well. It was said in the public comments that this is about this council not letting the people vote. This has been repeated several times and across multiple media spectrums. That is not true. If we do not get a judicial ruling on this, whatever election happens and the $200,000 that we pay for it is subject to challenge. We can't go forward responsibly without a legal, we can't go forward with an election without a legal ruling. It's not an attack on the petitioners. It's not an attack on the people that sign the petitioners. It protects them. If they go and gather 3,500 signatures, we hold an election, anybody, anybody, not this body, not one of the people involved in the deal, not one of the 3,500 petitioners, but one person decides that they don't like the results of that election, everything that this body has done and that all of those petitioners done, have done, can be invalidated with one court filing. That's what we protect against by seeking a court ruling. It's not to stop an election. If a judge comes back and says, "Hey, we can have an election," then let's have an election. But getting that ruling first protects everybody involved. It's not an attack on anybody. So I think, I think when we're talking about the sentiment here of everybody and the motivations of everybody involved here, I think it's important to recognize that this is not the city attacking the petitioners. This is the city guaranteeing that anything that comes out of that petition is legitimate and legal. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? I agree, this has been an excellent discussion, an educational process, I hope, for the public as the discussion among the council members.